This is the O N J Roberts Board of School Directors Regular Business Meeting being held on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. Please, and we are risen for the Pledge of Allegiance and Presentation of Colors by the Navy Junior Reserves Officer Training Corps, followed by a moment of silence. Present colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is our nation, under God, with the physical, the liberty, and justice of our home. Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on those serving in the United States Armed Forces, both past and present, the elected leaders for the state of Pennsylvania and elected leaders of our nation. We have much to be thankful for in our community. Color guard, post colors. Thank you. Please be seated. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. We are going to move right into the agenda. Executive Sessionist Announcement, Agenda Item three point one. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates in executive session to discuss items in one or more of the following areas: legal, personnel, or real estate matters on September sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Into the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Stoudt.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Well, we're going to start tonight with Maggie Mullen, who is our Student Government Executive Council President, who will provide tonight's Student Government Report. Welcome, Maggie.
Hi, nice to meet you. So today, we're going to look at the School Board Report with elementary schools. The elementary school students are back in the swing of things and adjusting to new routines. Beginning of the year, assessments are being conducted that will help determine the best instructional pathways for the students. Each school has hosted back-to-school nights with various P T A or P T O activities meant to welcome our elementary's families to the brand-new school year, and the high school graciously hosted all five of the schools for an annual elementary football night. Looking at the middle school. Students at the middle school are transitioning nicely back into their school routines, too. Many students are participating in all sports, including the new season of our middle school girls volleyball team. On September twelfth, our eighth-grade students attended an assembly led by Captain Reed and the students from our, I mean, high school, N J R O T C program. This is an annual event which offers the opportunity for eighth-grade students to participate in this program while still in middle school. Students have been very responsible to our P B I S efforts and have been earning cat pack tickets, displaying behavioral aligned with our building themes of responsibility, kindness, and mindfulness. The students will be able to cash in these tickets for rewards throughout the year. And then looking at our high school, the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year is off to a great start. Biggest change this year has been the addition of flex seat session during fourth period. Students have been engaged in a wide variety of sessions, including academic support, athletic team meetings, club meetings, and other informational gatherings. For example, today alone, students had over thirty unique options to choose from, such as cooking club, academic team, visits tutoring, best buddy hangouts, college essay support, dance, chamber orchestra, and weightlifting, to name a few. The options, opportunities change daily, and early impact has been very positive. Continuing, last week, we celebrated our homecoming week with Spirit Week. We had two different dances, a freshman dance and homecoming dance with sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Our major event that had already taken place, including last week's best buddies match night and athletic senior day celebrations. Counseling Department has been working with their twelfth-grade students and families holding Wildcat Future Sessions, College Application Information Night, and the N C A A Night, while hosting a number of college visits and providing a lot of individual support for the seniors. As we look ahead this Saturday, October fifth, it is our fifty-third Cavalcade of Fans, which will begin at four o'clock P M. On Thursday, October twelfth, I mean tenth, we will be hosting our spirit workshop to help elevate students' voices and help us develop a framework to problem solve and build the community. And then lastly, on Tuesday, November twelve, the high school will be hosting a Parenting on Your Feet and Mock Team Bedroom Workshop, which will focus on current trends relating to substance use and abuse by teens. This workshop is open to all families in the district.
All right. Thank you, Maggie. So the Pennsylvania School Board Association's Honorable School Board Service Program celebrates school board directors for long-term service and recognizes their dedication to their local school districts and communities. This year, we are recognizing the following school board members for their five years of service. To my right, Dr. John Melnezak. Congratulations, Doc. And I'm going to have to get up and walk over to my left, but Ms. Jennifer Munson. Just a couple more things with my report. The beginning of the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year is off to a great start, as Maggie alluded to. In her report, we have a lot of great things that are going on in our school district. On tonight's agenda, the administration will be seeking the board's approval of the French Creek Redistricting Plan. And then lastly, this is a reminder that there is no school for students and staff on Thursday, October third, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Stoudt. Thank you, Maggie. Congratulations, Ms. Munson and Dr. Melnezak. Thank you for your service. We are moving on to Agenda Item Five, Public Comments on Agenda Items. There are two opportunities for public comment. The first section is for information proposals and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to items on the agenda that will be voted on tonight. Speakers are to indicate your name, township of residence, and the item or items on the agenda to which your comments are addressed. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. The second section will be at the end of the meeting and is for residents to speak on any item. Also, if you have a question for the school board, please email all Board of School Directors at schoolboardmembers@ojrsd.net, and you will receive a written response. For anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence. Okay. We are moving on to Board Committee Reports, six point one, Working Session. Working Session was held on September sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. The following committees met at this time: Finance, Building and Grounds, and Legislative and Policy. Six point two, the Chester County Intermediate Unit, Ms. Munson.
The C C I U last met on Wednesday, September eighteenth, at T C H S Brandywine. It was also a meeting quarterly for the Chester County School Authority. So for those who don't know, in the state of Pennsylvania, the intermediate units themselves are not allowed to own property. So there is actually a separate board and a separate organization that owns the properties that the Chester County Schools, the intermediate schools operate out of. And so the exciting part there was seeing the progress on the C C D C Great Valley Campus, which has had its ground broken now, and I guess they're building, you know, from the foundations up. So that's very exciting. Also, the regular meeting contained just a lot of updates about start of school. I found it particularly interesting that the schools in the C C I U have now gone cellphone-free this year. They are using the Yonder pouches. I think we had had somebody show us those at some point, perhaps, but it's a magnetic closure pouch that the phone stays in all day, and the phone cannot communicate while it's in the pouch. So they said that they've got appropriate policies in line. They've had very few students actually try to break the pouches, which is good. And so far, they're thinking it has been very good for their student population in terms of focus during the day. So that was interesting to hear. Our next meeting for the intermediate unit is Wednesday, September sixteenth, at the Child and Career Development Center in Coatesville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Did I say that?
I meant October. Thank you.
Six point three, Curriculum and Special Education Committee, Ms. Sabo.
The Curriculum Department did not meet as part of September Working Session. However, the department has been busy with the start of the year for new teachers and has provided induction, professional development for all teachers, and start of the fall student assessments. The planning for full-day kindergarten is underway. This month, the team will be considering the social-emotional program that should be part of the kindergarten experience. Group has visited other programs and learned about purposeful play and how other districts have incorporated these social skills into their full-day program. Professional development for bystander training is planned for the faculty to begin on November first, Professional Development Day, and the countrywide in-service is planned, sorry, countywide in-service is planned for November fifth. That is all.
Six point four, Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee, Mr. Harmonos.
Thank you. The Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee met at the September sixteenth Working Session, during which two architecture firms presented their proposals for the upcoming site facility design work on main campus. Breslin Architects and Schrader Architects share their work on previous construction projects and their anticipated construction schedule and timelines for this O N J project. The board had an opportunity to tour two schools designed by the Schrader Group today, and they are scheduled to tour schools designed by Breslin Architects next week on October seventh. During the October fourteenth Working Session, we will be discussing and deliberating these two proposals further.
Thank you, Mr. Harmonos. Six point five, Legislative and Policy Committee, Ms. Munson.
Legislative and Policy did meet during the September sixteenth Working Session, and as a result, you can find the first reading items at, let's see, Agenda Item seven point nine, which are Policies three, three, nine for uncompensated leave and eight of seven, opening exercises slash moment of silence slash flag displays. And then in Section thirteen point six, you'll find the Policies for Second Reading, two eighteen, Student Discipline, and the Policies underneath that, two eighteen dot one, Weapons, and two eighteen dot two, Terroristic Threats. There aren't major changes to that. It's a lot of very technical tweaking of the language that was recommended to us. Two twenty-two, Tobacco and Vaping Products, two twenty-seven, Controlled Substances, Paraphernalia, and three twenty-three, which is the employee version of the tobacco and vaping products. Again, not a lot of significant changes here, very minor. And that is it for Legislative and Policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Personnel Committee, six point six, Dr. Atoli.
Thank you. O J R held a Support Staff Job Fair on Tuesday, September tenth, from four to seven P M in the high school library. We had eleven candidates attend the fair and interviewed six potential power professionals. The interviews were shared with principals and special education supervisors to move qualified candidates to the next round. Representatives from E S S and gross bus service were onsite as well. We're looking to hold another Support Staff Job Fair in Lake Paul. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Atoli. Moving on to Agenda Item seven, Recommended Routine Matters Consent Items. May I have, seven point one, a motion to approve Recommended Routine Matters Consent Items, seven point two through seven point nine. May I have a motion to approve the following routine matters, which are Items seven point two through seven point nine as action consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
And Dr. Atoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, eight point one, Acknowledge Receipt of Donations, Contributions, and Gifts. This month, we acknowledge a gift to North Coventry Elementary from the Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation. Those four hundred dollars to be used for activities that improve school wellness through nutrition, physical activity, and/or stress management. May I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of donations, contributions, and gifts as presented? So, Ms. Shavel Fuller, a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabo, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Item nine, nine point one, the motion to approve routine matters as consent items nine point two through nine point five. May I have a motion to approve the following routine matters, which are Items nine point through to nine point five as action consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Sir.
Mr. Chester, any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item ten, Board Discussion, or any Board Discussion at this time?
Would anybody that was on the tour today like to give their thoughts?
I think it was, you know, as Mr. Harmonos said during his committee report, we had the opportunity to tour two of the buildings today that one of the architects, the Schrader Group, had put forward. And I think both showed, one was a complete remodel, which was far outside the scope of the work that we were looking to do, although it offered a lot of opportunity to understand possibilities. And the second was more refurbishing and reworking space, including grand master spaces across, through the entire campus, which, and in both cases, they have very limited space and availability. So seeing the creativity of how these spaces were maximized, especially in both cases, with special detail on how traffic flow and movement amongst students and guests on campus is handled, was really good to see, because I think that's a big part of what we are considering, is how we are going to move everything around campus, from our buses and our drivers to our students, and seeing their creative use of space was good. I know, I think we look forward to seeing the Breslin buildings next week.
Thanks.
Any additional discussion? No. We are on Agenda Item eleven, Old Business, Mrs. Carmine.
There is no old business.
New Business, Agenda Item twelve, twelve point one, a motion to approve Personnel Matters as consent items twelve point two through twelve point five. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel Matters, Consent Items twelve point two through twelve point five? Please.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Atoli and Ms. Sabo, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to our staff who achieved tenure this year. Agenda Item thirteen, New Business, thirteen point one, the approval of French Creek Elementary School, the, sorry, the approval of the French Creek Elementary School twenty-five, twenty-six redistricting plan. May I have a motion to approve the French Creek Elementary School twenty-five, twenty-six redistricting plan?
Move.
Dr. Atoli?
Second.
Ms. Shavel Fuller? Any discussion?
I think I just wanted to make a few comments. I was able to attend the P T A meeting that where we, our administrative, administration team presented to families that wanted to come at French Creek, and there was a lot of concerns, and, you know, we're moving around kids and families. And I think I just wanted to note that there was a lot of thought that went into the redistricting plan, and a lot of different considerations have been made. And I know one of the big things that kept coming up was making sure kids don't get removed, that were moved, you know, like making sure there's a seven-year between moving the households and such like that, so we don't have the same student moving schools more than once. And we're lucky we have people that have been on our administration for a long time and know when those last moves have been made. So all of that stuff was taken into consideration. I also wanted to note that as we move forward with this, I know it's been talked about, and I hope the conversation continues when we talk about sixth grade and what some of those possibilities might look like for some of those students that are moving. What can we do to make those transitions best? And for all of our students, how can we help build community with new schools and things like that? So just hopefully we can continue to address that and really think about that as we move forward.
I'd agree, and I, that the tour that some of us got to take of the two schools organized by Dr. Soder really was comforting to see the enormous amount of planning that went into this. And I think that should make people feel comfortable that this isn't just, we're moving a bunch of kids from here to there. There's an enormous amount of thought that went into it. And also, there's still time for constructive suggestions that I'm sure the administration will consider.
Yeah, I would say that having this vote at this time of year gives us the opportunity to, gives the administration the opportunity to plan well for those students as they make this transition. You know, as April, Ms. Sabo was talking about, you know, making sure that we are not, you know, redistricting the same families. You know, this will be with my kids in the district, I think, the third redistricting that, you know, I've been a part of either as a school board member, as a parent, or as members of redistricting committees. And I know, I empathize with families and how this affects daily life and the changes that your family will make. But having witnessed two other redistrictings so far, I know that from my own experience, the good faith effort that is made to help our children with this transition. And so while I certainly empathize that it is not what we as parents would necessarily want, I do, from my own experience, see that when we do have to make these changes, it is handled well.
And it, right, we are only affecting two of our five elementary schools. I'm very grateful that we've found creative ways of handling things in all the other elementary schools that we do not have to impact more children. I think we do need to be very sensitive to the fact that it is very disruptive to move schools, especially in elementary school. So it's not something that we're doing lightly, and we definitely want to make sure that we are set up right for the next ten or more years, not, you know, this isn't just for full-day kindergarten next year. I think, you know, I've looked at it in terms of the projections, and it looks like this is the right thing to do for the future beyond full-day kindergarten. And we've also gotten some great information from, or suggestions from community members, and I'd like to encourage that, too, you know, even when we can't do things or there are things we're already doing, it doesn't hurt to hear them again from the community.
And also, I think all five of our buildings, elementary buildings, are full of very good, very positive staff and students. I think no matter which elementary school one is in, one gets a great education here. And that's really important. It's not like this school's better than that school. They're all really very good. The teachers, the parents, the administration, they're top-notch in every one of our elementary schools, and middle and high school.
So I am going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thirteen point two, the approval of the twenty, sorry, two thousand and twenty-five P S B A slate of candidates. May I have a motion for the approval of the two thousand and twenty-five P S B A slate of candidates as presented? Dr. Atoli?
Second.
Ms. Munson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point three, the approval of conference attendance. May I have a motion for the approval of conference attendance as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Harmonos?
Second.
Dr. Melnezak, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point four, the approval of out-of-state overnight student trips. May I have a motion for the approval of out-of-state overnight trips, student trips as presented?
So moved.
Second, Dr. Atoli and Ms. Shavel Fuller.
This is hard. You could give it to Warren.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point five, the ratification of homebound instruction. May I have a motion for the ratification of homebound instruction for student A? So moved, Ms. Shavel Fuller?
Second.
Dr. Atoli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point six, the approval of Policies for Second Reading. May I have a motion for the approval of Policies for Second Reading, and that is Policy two eighteen, two eighteen point one, two eighteen point two, two twenty-two, two twenty-seven, and three twenty-three?
So moved.
Ms. Munson, Ms. Sabo? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point seven, the approval to establish a student activity. May I have a motion for the approval to establish a student activity club in accordance with provisions of Section five eleven of the Pennsylvania School Code and School Board Regulation one twenty-two A and/or one twenty-two B as presented? This approval also provides for the establishment of counts within the student activity accounting system when applicable. This month, we have the, at the high school with no account needed, the Literacy Mosaic Club, and at the high school with student activity account needed, the Eating Disorder Awareness Club, E D A C, F A M, the Fighting Against Animal Mistreatment Club, and the Jam Club. And at the middle school, the Cat Pack Ambassadors. There are motions.
Now moved.
Dr. Atoli?
Second.
Ms. Shavel Fuller, any discussion?
I have a question about the Cat Pack Ambassadors.
Yes.
They reference in their application, student engagement, and voice in P B I S. I don't know what P B I S is.
Positive Behavior.
Well, you're going to test me tonight. Positive Behavior Intervention Systems.
Oh, okay.
Correct. The I, the I was going to get me a little confused there, but yeah, I know we use acronyms, but that's what it is, Positive Behavior Program, which we were really emphasizing this year. It was in your report earlier at the middle school.
Great. No further questions.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Does this put us up at about one-ten now at the high school for clubs? We're getting close, right? Thirteen point eight, the approval of Student Activity Club Advisors and Student Officers. May I have a motion for the approval of Student Activity Club Advisors and Student Officers in accordance with the provisions of Section five eleven of the Pennsylvania School Code for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented?
Move.
Dr. Atoli?
Second.
Ms. Shavel Fuller, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen point nine, the approval of a memorandum of understanding with compass mark as presented. May I have a motion for the approval of a memorandum of understanding with compass mark as presented? Please.
Move.
Dr. Atoli?
Second.
Mr. Harmonos? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen-ten, the approval of ratification of professional services maintenance agreements. May I have a motion for the approval of ratification of professional services maintenance agreements as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Chester?
Second.
Mr. Harmonos, any discussion? Mr. Harmonos, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Agenda Item fourteen, Public Comment. Information, Proposals, and Statements from Individuals or Delegations pertaining to any item. Speakers are to indicate your name and township of residence. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue with the board. Rather, the board will listen to all comments and consider them in future deliberations. Also, if you have any questions for the school board, please email all Board of School Directors at schoolboardmembers@ojrSD.net, and you will receive a written response. For anyone online who would like to make a comment, please use the raise hand function. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and township of residence.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm Colleen Blute, North Coventry, East Coventry Township. I got a phone call tonight from a parent who doesn't want to come here because they really don't attend school here and have no intention of ever attending school here. But their first grader gets a bus at six-thirty, first grader, first grader, six-thirty. Their neighbor, whose family friend, lives around the corner and gets her bus at seven oh five. So the mother's been taking the child to the seven oh five bus stop, so she gets another half hour's sleep. As a six- or seven-year-old, she needs that sleep. But the parents got a email that said they can't do that anymore because the family that the child is going to is not babysitting, babysitting them. Now, if the child is there being babysat, she could get it. What's the difference? She's six years old, she's getting on a bus at six-thirty, she's driving over here to go to the middle school, and then hop on another bus to go to a private school. That's pretty unfair to do to a six-year-old or a seven-year-old. Would you want that for your child? I wouldn't. I'd pull my kid out and I'd drive her. Is that what you want the parent to do? Or do you want to just let the parent take the child to the seven oh five stop and let the child get on the bus there? What's the difference? It's less than a quarter of a mile. Why can't it be done? Thank you.
Dana, if you can unmute, and, uh, please state your full name and township of residence.
Thank you, Dana Shafon, East Vincent Township. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the master facilities plan, and I did attend the meeting, the working session with the two architectural firms that presented. Um, during that meeting, there was discussion about, um, possibly reworking the phases of the project to, um, you know, to avoid Act thirty-four. Um, I've been trying to educate myself a bit about that. And yes, Act thirty-four, the, there are three levels of hearings. The third hearing would be if the district would bump up against requirements for a referendum, which would be a vote on a ballot. So I don't think the public has seen those numbers, and, you know, there's no way, I, I don't think any of us could calculate those, um. But my understanding of the first two hearings is that it brings a lot of transparency to the public and to the taxpayers. Um, it looks at justification for the projects, other options that were considered, the, you know, the cost to the taxpayer, um, a lot of great information. It's not a hearing, there is no vote, it can be tacked onto a school board meeting. So I would, I would really hope that you would reconsider, um, any, you know, shuffling of phases just to avoid Act thirty-four. So that, that's something that I'm, I'm going to, you know, have to study up a little bit more on, but that's my understanding in, um, looking at what P D E has on, on the website and reading the statute. And then just in talking about the scope of the project, um, you know, if you look at the discretionary spending, and it's difficult, again, there's a lot of things that are sort of co-mingled together, projects, and then can, soft costs and contingency, so I can't really break things out. But if I just look at the sixty-five and a half million, and what I'll describe as discretionary spending, um, and I look at athletics, that comes in at about fifty-six percent. Performing arts, just looking at the high school, I didn't touch the middle school as discretionary, that's about twenty-one percent. A new district administration office at eighteen percent, that would be at the twelve million dollar level. And then the parking and circulation is up to six million now. I believe the original estimate, it's about five hundred and sixty-four percent higher than the original twenty-nineteen estimate. So I understand inflation, and I'm, you know, trying to get my sense of, some of these things may have doubled, but even if they doubled, this is, you know, we'd be looking at one point eight million, but now we're looking at, I think it was six, almost six million, yeah, it was up to six million. So, you know, just some questions about some of those things and how we can break those out so the public can have a little bit more transparency around that. And also, you know, any attempt to maybe shift some of the spending to focus on educational program, as I've mentioned before, like a STEAM science type of addition, um, potentially where you're considering putting the district administration office. So those are just some thoughts, I'm sure I'll continue to engage. Thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you, Dana.
We have one more hand raised. Uh, Heather, if you can unmute, and please state your, it's like you're trying to unmute. Uh, please state your full name and township of residence.
Uh, Heather McCrary, East Coventry Township. I just would echo, um, very quickly what Dana said in terms of, uh, being transparent with the projects if this is going forward, because we are working on ideas that were put into place by people from two thousand and eighteen. And that is six years ago, by the time this, all these projects get done, that's like ten years, right? So I would encourage that also, so the people at the school can be engaged, and also with looking at how long these projects are going to be taking place, because there weren't that many people that were paying attention to the meeting or online, but people are talking about it, and the fact that this school will be under construction for probably, you know, seven to ten years is something that people should understand in terms of what the previous speaker, Dana, said in terms of how you guys are going to stage this project. And one of the important and really dear to my heart things that were there on that project was enhancing the performance art wing in terms of the band, because those, that, that is the necessary area down there, and that we look at education items, including band, and not just to focus on the sports. Not saying sports is not important, but I think you guys really have to look at the transparency and how you're laying this out for the public so that they are engaged in what you're doing. Um, and I logged in a little bit late, I just wanted to shout out to the Cavalcade this year and Mr. Mangle's thirtieth Cavalcade, if everybody is going to engage in that and watch. I think they said that it's going to be online, I think that's an incredible accomplishment. And if, since this would be his last year, if we could do things intentionally, like a search for a new band director that could tie into the project management and transparency, I think would be really great. Thank you.
Agenda Item fifteen, Boardists. Right? Board Discussion, follow-up and request for information. Is there any Board Discussion, follow-up, or request for information at this time? With that, I adjourn this evening's meeting, thank you.